Good morning. It is Wednesday, October 4, 2023. We will be having council time in a bit, but we begin with the 2023 Fall Budget Supplemental. It will be a detailed report, and we'll see what our standing is at this point in time. So Kathleen Otto, if you wish to begin.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, council. First of all, I want to say all of our partners are on today from the different offices and departments so that they can answer any specific questions that council may have. I do want to start also by saying thank you to everybody with their intentional request. The Fall Supplemental is somewhat restrictive. It's really not for ongoing new requests. It's things that have happened during the year to ensure that we're in compliance with our budget by the end of the year. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. It takes a long time. And of course, our finance team providing valuable input as well as our budget office, who actually manages everything and manages the process, the reports and everything that you see. And it is a lot of work that happens to get us to this point. So this morning, again, this is the 2023 Fall Supplemental. We'll talk about the purpose and timeline, recommendations that are coming forward, the major fund impacts. We will go over the general fund six-year forecast and let everybody know where the budget reports are actually listed on our website so that the council and the public can go on and see the details. And I know you've all heard this before with supplemental budgets, but pursuant to RCW 3640, it does allow for supplemental budgets throughout the year to address any unforeseen situations that may put the county at safety and welfare of the citizens of Clark County at risk, any unforeseen situations which hinders the ability of a department or office to fulfill a statutory obligation, labor contracts, legal settlements, other judgments, and unforeseen revenue sources. And part of the timeline here, the submission deadline was on August 21st. Again, there is a lot of work that departments had to do to actually submit the change request before August 21st. The budget office and myself met with all the departments and offices to discuss their requests. And out of that comes the recommendations. And today, we are presenting that information with the recommendation to council. And then the public hearing is currently scheduled for October 17th. All the specific, I specified slide. All the specific information on these requests, again, are online. All the details in the decision packages. Today, for the recommendations, we have 44 previously approved by council. What this means is it actually has come to council for final consideration and adoption. Normally, through a Tuesday meeting. There may have been some stuff on Wednesdays, but most days are Tuesday meeting. Budget neutral, a lot of these are grants. So we're getting the revenue in and the expenditure so it does not have a net impact on the budget. We have technical adjustments. We just have two technical adjustments. These are usually just cleanup, like a wrong code was used to ensure that we're putting it in the right place. Carryforward, so these are requests that have, has already been approved, but the department or office has not fully spent the money and it's going to carry forward into the next budget cycle. So just to make sure that that budget capacity moves forward for them. And then a new request. We have 38 new requests that the council will be considering or providing feedback on today. I will say there's also a type of request called a budget intervention. And this is the request that we do if we're having to look at reductions in any way to get balance. We do not have any of those packages in this Fall Supplemental. So I am actually going to go, I got to switch my screens around a little bit here. I'm going to spend most of the time this morning talking about new requests. And I'll summarize the previously approved budget neutral and technical adjustment just for time as this also has been discussed with council. So for previously approved, we had 44 packages that were already approved. Seventeen of those were grants, some in the sheriff's office, the DUI courts, victim notification and other grants. We had four ARPA requests such as the North Country EMS. Nine capital, I believe these were from the spring supplemental, after the spring supplemental. We had two public safety sales tax. And then we had some others that were already previously approved such as the jail medical contract, state lobbying services, opioid settlements and others. Budget neutral, there are 12 budget neutral submissions. All of these are grants. This includes the juvenile detention alternative initiative or the JDI grant, Superior Court grants, the low-income energy assistance grants and others. So all of those have the revenue and expenditures. There are 11 carryforward. Again, these were already approved but not fully spent out. Some items include like the aging readiness plan update amount that council approved, ecology grant for the Vancouver Lake, Baker Tilly, cost of compensation study. My computer wanted to restart. The courthouse elevator repairs, railroad crossing repairs and others. Technical adjustments, we have two. Again, these are just corrections. One was correcting the TERNR, which is a technology reserve calculated charges for a specific fund. It was actually in funds 1017 instead of fund 1018. So it's just changing that fund. And then community services, there was an update on that to accurately reflect the computer counts in 2023. So as mentioned, there are 38 requests this morning for the supplemental. And I'm going to try to do this succinctly and briefly, but like I said, my partners are online. The details are online. So if there's questions, we can answer those. And I know everybody's here to help provide that information. So the Caster is asking for spending authority of about $105,000 to contract with Cyclo Media and capture street level imagery. This provides the ability to perform annual inspections without having to travel to and from the field. So this improves efficiency, reducing fuel and vehicle costs. And they also may be able to support other departments and local jurisdictions. Auditor's office requesting approval of transfer funding for revenue recovery from ARPA. This is actually happened, I think, the last year or two. As a norm, they have the formula and everything that we can use. Auditor's office also one-time cash transfer from general fund to elections. This is important because we have to pay for elections upfront and then there is reimbursement after that from the local jurisdictions. And that is also in alignment with the fund balance policy for this. Capital items for the auditor expense.
Excuse me, could you just say the amount as we go along?
I don't, I will have to, it's in the decision package. I'll have to.
If it's, okay.
If I haven't noted, I will.
If it's hard, don't worry about it.
Yes, do you have?
I just had it for the first one, so I was going to make a list.
Yes, and those reports are online as well with all of that and the decision package. And if you need, I can give you my sheet sheet here. It's okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so capital item for the auditor's office. This is expense capacity for upgrading a tabulation equipment in elections. In the council office, county manager office, we had a regional and the 15,000. So if I haven't noted, I will certainly say that. We have the regional disaster preparedness office and the state auditor's office association and dues increases. So the regional disaster is about 3,500 and the state auditor's increased the rate. That will now cost us an additional $15,000. The clerk's office is requesting to increase the service budget by $12,000 to pair with the already forecasted revenue from the sale of on-base licenses, correcting an oversight of not including the expenses of the item in the 2023 budget. Code enforcement, this is just redlining position costs for the manager over code enforcement and animal control to 50/50. This also allows us to charge a little bit more, I believe, with the city of Vancouver to help reimburse for those costs. Additionally, in code enforcement, increasing expense capacity to meet our contractual obligations with the Humane Society contract. Historically, the increase has been absorbed by vacancy savings, but we are, we have less vacancy savings so we need to have the budget capacity. The report does show that animal control, the increased expense budget for the hearings examiner was a new request. If council remembers, I believe you just approved this yesterday. So that will be updated before the public hearing to acknowledge that that is the, actually previously approved. Community development, the request for a one-time increase in the general fund subsidy of $580,000 for land use review and $196,000 for wetland and habitat review for land use review and wetland and habitat reviews. The auditor's office, the finance team and community development are conducting a study on the programs and the associated fees. And we're hoping to bring this back to council in a work session in the first quarter of 2024. This has been an ongoing issue where general fund is having to subsidize that department for those fees. The fees have not been reviewed or updated in years. So once that review is done, we will be bringing that back to council. Community development, one-time budget authority, spending authority for the E Plan project. This was originally coded to services as non-capital. Later determined the cost should be moved to capital outlay due to the nature of the project. Also, community development, a one-time increase in budget authority for general fund programs due to the increase in departmental cost allocations. This is annually administration, business tech and permit center are allocated to COMD community development divisions based on the cost allocations. And this will ensure that we have adequate budget for 2023. Community planning, this has been brought up a couple times during council's meetings regarding the freight rail dependent use regulation and the direction to move forward intentionally with some of the regulations. This is $100,000 to help get support to lead that project. Community planning is a very lean department with the comp plan update. If we want to make sure we're being responsive to council's requests to keep this moving forward, we'll need some outside assistance and a project employee for that. Also, in community planning, requesting contingency backup to the comp plan grant. So it's about $400,000. We are anticipating that Commerce was going to provide the grant disbursement at the end of October. They have not, and we have not seen anything yet. Nobody has seen anything yet. So just as a placeholder, having the $400,000 as a placeholder. And then, of course, if we receive the grant, we will not need to use that funding. Community services, budget capacity for the veterans fund. This is one of our subordinate levies. This is a technical correction to update the increase in budget authority due to the increased revenue collections over multiple years. Facilities, expense capacity of $315,000. The department has seen an increase in department reimbursement requests such as utilities, supplies, contractual services and others. In addition, increased expense and revenue budget for the fair. The fair has done really well over the last two years. The budgeted expenses and revenues for ongoing have not been reviewed since 2019 because we didn't have a fair for a couple of years. So this is to acknowledge that increase in expense and revenue budget this year. And then there will be an ongoing look in 2024 budget so that we can set that baseline again accordingly. Additionally, facilities, additional expense budget for a new flail in Fort Heritage Farm. I learned that that is a device on the back of a tractor for mowing. I did not know that. The original estimate was 15,000. It is coming in closer to 24,000. And that is actually provided on a state contract. Some capital facilities, request of $100,000 of additional major maintenance funding for the roof at CCH, which is our community health center. It's where DCS and community health and then other jurisdictions. Our staff was on the roof doing some repairs and found that part of the roof was bubbling. And so this is to help secure that roof because if we don't, then water is going to get in there and it's going to cause a lot more extensive damage to the building. Human resources, a one-time budget in the amount of $850,000 for workers' compensation. Insurance increases, Al and I announced at the end of November that it was a 4.8% increase that would be applied to the rates. The cost increase will be covered by existing fund balance. Additionally, requesting allocation for program coordinator two in human resources. They support both workers' comp and risk. This will have a new allocation to result in 25% of their costs will be paid or allocated for workers' comp and 75% for risk management. Indigent defense, increase the dependency rate from $75 to $125. It's a total of $212,000. They haven't seen an increase in many years and this is consistent with other counties. Also with the indigent defense, requesting two Adobe licenses for the office assistants. Currently, there's only one. And this is, I think, only like $800, around $800. But as you'll see in the next request, they don't have enough budget to even cover the $800. But it's so that they can, it's just not one person that can pay invoices. We can actually have the two office assistants. So the next one under indigent defense, this is the increase to cover the overage in 2023 in the amount of $650,000. This is above and beyond ARPA. And most of this is due to murder trials, the increase in trials that we're seeing in our county. Internal services, an increase of expense authority of $65,000 in both the mailroom and print shop. This is due to a couple of things. Increase in supplies, paper, the cost inflation, and also the postal service has increased postage amount. Tri Mountain Golf Course, increase in the expense and revenue budgets for 2023. The 2023 expenses is expected to be 200,000 more than budgeted and revenue is already 702,000 more than budgeted. So it's to recognize the differences above and beyond what was budget for 2023. Information services, increased budget capacity for increased technology and software costs, $100,000. This does not require additional funding as it will be using existing fund balance. The budget amount is updated each year on the number and types of computers and hardware in each department. Law library, we do have an MOU at the law library that does outline some specific areas in which the county will provide support. So this is for a transfer of just under $11,000 from general fund for indirect costs, including general liability insurance and IT-related expenses. And just for information, that MOU has been in place since 2018. The prosecuting attorney's office, recognizing more revenue than expenses due to an out-of-cycle grant, the grant awarded by the Washington Auto Theft Prevention Authority. The full award was $640,000, which pay for two deputy prosecuting positions. There's an estimated just over $163,000 that will be billed to the grant and come in as revenue in 2023. The public health, medical examiner office, forensic pathology. This contract was approved by council previously. This is adding some additional funding to ensure that we can close the year within budget. The cash outs for the medical examiner who left drained their available capacity. So we just want to make sure we can come within budget in 2023. Public Works, Parks new ongoing budget appropriated in the amount of $83,000 from general fund for the railroad crossing signal and inspection and maintenance program. We just want to make sure that we're using the appropriate fund and have that documented clearly. Also with Public Works, one-time increase in the fuel and inventory expense authority in the amounts of $2.5 million from Fund 1591 to cover increased fuel and inventory costs. As you know, our fuel prices have been very high in the recent years. The Bureau of Labor and Statistics stated cost of goods in May of 2023 are, on average, almost 53% higher than 2021. The revenue will be offset from other departments for this expense. Public Works capital, there's a one-time budget appropriation request of $110,000 for the procurement and implementation of cartograph, including reallocation and the increased ongoing budget appropriation of $115,000 for the annual service subscription. And this, again, will also ensure that we're in compliance with how we're coding and expending those funds. This is for the new asset management system in Public Works. The next few are similar in that they're updates to different programs that have been approved by council. And I'll just say, the reason why is that the annual budget process is already underway as well. So they're having to forecast really early in the year. So these three are really to adjust to show what actually is happening so to update the budget. So the first one is updating the 2023-28 Transportation Improvement Program budget to better align again with the updated estimates for this year. The second one is the 2023-28 Stormwater Capital Plan. And then the last one is the Parks and Lands Capital Improvement Plan for 2023 to 2028. Additionally, on Public Works capital, the county did receive funding for two railroad maintenance projects and anticipated grant funding for one additional project in 2023. The two prior ones have already been approved by council and it funds to perform railroad roadbed rehab, which will be reached completion in early 2023. The second one was to repair bridges and perform railroad roadbed rehab, which is, will be expended in 2023. The county was notified of a $500,000 appropriation in the state supplemental budget railroad that will become available in 2023. $1.9 million from general fund for railroad projects in 2023 are funded by $1.8 million grants and $56,000 from general fund. And then finally, on the new request, the treasurer's office is requesting an increase in revenue and expense budget capacity in the amount of $200,000 for the tourism promotion area, which is a hotel motel revenues pass-through. The revenues are coming in higher than expected. And the purpose of the TPA is to fund the promotion of tourism and convention business within the county and city. And then, like I mentioned, there's two that are not being recommended today. The first one, and both of them are for the same reason, they're FTE requests, ongoing FTE requests. The PA was asking for a .25 FTE victim advocate position. They currently have a .75. And HR is asking for an additional .05 FTE as one of the employees is currently at a .95 to make them whole. The only reason why they're not being recommended is that these are considered as part of the annual budgeting process. So we have actually taken those packages and put them in the annual budgeting process for consideration at that time. Okay, I will take a pause and see what questions you all have. And that's one of the reasons why we go through the work session is to get questions. And then we can go back to if we need to do any additional research or provide additional information before the hearing.
Chair, I have a couple of questions. Related to the comp plan update and that $400,000, do we have any sense of when we might hear from the state if we'll be successful or not?
They, no, I mean, we are contacting them regularly. A good thing is that they have not released grant funding to any county. That was one of my questions, knowing that we have not received it, but they have not issued it at all to any state or any county. So we will keep you posted as we hear.
And then we also will be looking for some money from the state for the climate change component of it, additional to that $400,000. Is that right? Would that be included? I know the work has already started. Would that be included here or would it be next year's budget?
I'm assuming it would be next year's as it's not part of the supplemental. And Jose, I know you are on. Do you have any information on that one?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
So it's for any potential funding for the climate change that we may receive from the state. I'm assuming that we are not anticipating that in 2023 since there was no supplemental budget request. Have you heard anything about that type of funding and when it would be received?
I think the grant, the grant would include, would begin, we could charge back to July 1 of 2023, but we haven't heard anything yet.
Okay, so the current grant fund for the comp plan update, the climate portion is included in that $400,000. Is that correct?
There's two grants, one for the comp plan and then a second one, I think, for $700,000 over two years for the climate change.
So if I am understanding this right, there's $400,000 and then $700,000 additional over two years?
It's a total of $700,000, I think, that's available for the, for climate over the two years.
And that's above what we'll be getting for the comp plan update?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
So I do have a question and a couple of related comments. But the first thing is sitting on the public safety sales tax, we're seeing, and I know it's across the board, but we're seeing a lot of requests for additional staffing. And that's going to be hard on the budget, very hard. Tough positions and decisions to make. In addition to, you know, we just are in the, still in the process for represented employees on increasing salaries as a result of the Tilly work that was done and rightly so. But that's going to really cause us to have to tighten our budget as we've increased a lot of salaries across the county. So what I saw in the P, in the public safety sales tax are a lot of packages that we really need to consider in the full budgeting process, not just for one source of funding through, in that case, the public safety sales tax. The one small question I had, we had approved a software package for the PA in anticipation of all the additional editing and work that needs to occur with body cam and dash cam film for presentation to the court as well as to the defense. But we had discussed a similar package for the defense. And I don't see that anywhere in here. And I don't know that we have a solution yet as to, until we get a public defender's office where that capacity would reside. But obviously, we need to provide the same kind of resource to the defense. The other comment I would make is, you know, where on the table right now is one judge position, one commissioner position or two judge positions. And that's going to be a balancing act because the commissioner costs us more money. But all the ancillary costs ultimately are somewhat similar between all the judges' positions. And I also understand that the legislature is considering two additional positions. One county didn't want it and they were thinking of pushing it down to Clark County. So we may have two additional Superior Court judge positions, which means additional clerks, courtrooms, bailiffs, defense support in the criminal realm, all of the above. There are a lot of ancillary costs that come out of our budget, not the state budget. And then we recently saw an article on, you know, the mediation services that the court does. And I wish all of this was funded by a state budget for the courts. They should have their own budget. And indigent defense, unrepresented litigants, that all should be funded through the state, but we're not anywhere near there. But the story, the end of the story was, and it's an important need that I haven't seen surface yet, is the courts need to continue with mediation service, especially as to evictions, you know, the short cause processes that go on, whether evictions will occur or, normally that works out through mediation and we're going to lose that service. So that's going to be a budgeting impact for the courts. And I haven't actually heard the court speak up to us about it. So we have a lot of, I mean, this, this is almost the easiest part, although I know how much work you've done in preparing this. But when we get to our budget, we're going to have a lot of tough choices to make and tighten our belt across the board.
Yeah, you touched on the important part. I will be sending some information for the annual budgeting process and different decision points for policy decisions for council and the draft decision packages. And I will use caution with that. They're still being validated. We still, we're starting meetings today with departments and offices. So it's a work in progress, it's not final. But just the sheer number, I can tell you, it's 470 pages long. It's the largest request we've ever had. There's about 140 FTEs. There's about 140 FTE requests still. I'm not sure if that's changed at all, give or take some. We don't have the budget for sustaining that type of request, and it is going to be a tough discussion because we have, I think, a good balance for one-time requests that are ongoing. We need to make sure it's sustainable, and so we're going to have to, you know, and I haven't talked to the courts about this at all, but, you know, if a new judge comes, maybe there are opportunities where we can, that they can work together between the clerk, district court, and Superior Court for shared services amongst, because there might be some, some areas that we might be able to be more efficient. I don't know, I'll, we'll need to have that discussion. But yes, those will be coming during the annual budgeting process.
Chair?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you. So I was just wanting to kind of touch base on that. You know, we are going to, it's interesting because our revenue is, from my understanding, doing very well, but just our expenses are going up so fast. And, you know, I'm looking at this, this giant request for, for new FTEs and new staff, and one of the things that I think is probably happening is for such a long time, we have been completely understaffed. And so I think all the departments have been basically kind of treading water, just doing what they absolutely have to and not being able to do really anything that's for the good of the public. And so I think now that the, the staffing levels are starting to return, that they're starting to look at some of those things that they set off to the side that really need done, but it wasn't an absolute necessity, and now they're trying to figure out how they're going to be able to tackle those things. So that was just one little comment I had, but I did have a question also. As far as workers' comp, are we not able to self-insure for that?
We're currently self-insured.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we still, okay, so we still send the funding to the state and then it comes back to us, but they have a separate fund for us or something like that? Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to know, our staff has done amazing work for the public with limited resources, and they haven't had increase in staff. I mean, I don't know, maybe 10 in the last three years, new requests, and it is going to be tough. You know, we're, we're bounced for a few years as long, you know, but thank goodness our revenues did come in strong, stronger than anticipated, but right now they're coming in right on budget, so we're not still seeing that increase. But we're, it's going to be a discussion on what's the appropriate level of service and what's required by law and what is not, and how is that going to look? Because unfortunately, while I agree that the FTE request that will be coming in the annual budget is warranted and it's needed, but unfortunately, financially, we can't afford it. We're supposed to wait for this gloom and doom conversation for the annual budget, not the supplemental, but I, it's, it's good that it's on everybody's mind because it's, it's going to be tough. Yeah. I'm just thankful we weren't asking for reductions like we have in the past. We had to go through reduction scenarios to ensure that we could cover what we currently had because we were so upside down. Any other questions before we hit the six-year forecast? Not, not hearing any, so thank you, Kristin, for blowing that up a little bit. These are always really small numbers. So this, we just said the general fund six-year forecast. During the annual budgeting process, we do most of our major funds, so you'll see more six-year forecasts. So the top is the beginning fund balance of 79.9 million, and then you have our revenue and expenses. The only update from the fall supplemental on the revenue expenses, those are usually the adopted budget, is that the Baker Tilly was included in the expenses that we had put forward and council had approved. And I will note the money that was put forward, the percentage for Baker Tilly was great, it got us there, but that was a one-time, so we still have to have the escalation moving forward on that new baseline. The spring supplemental, that's before you, let me make sure I'm looking at this, is about 4.8 million dollars. And then just above that, the 4.26 million was what was the spring supplemental. So then the fall supplemental is the 4.87 million. And as you can see, there's really no ongoing changes from, and that's the yellow line moving forward. It's more just one-time adjustments to get us in alignment with the budget for 2023. Total modifiers then is the, for the spring and the fall supplemental is 9.1 million, which leaves a projecting fund balance of 62 or just about 63 million dollars. Compensated absences is 2.3 million. This is about 25% if everybody were to leave, what it would be to cash out their leave, so paid time off, sick leave, vacation leave. So that's 25%. That's actually calculated by the auditor's office, so that we have that in there. Non-spendable encumbered invoices, about 1.7. These are known things that we have to pay for, but we have not been invoiced or paid for them yet, so just putting that placeholder aside so we can continue to pay for that, which leaves the minimum fund balance at 32.2 million, and this is per the minimum fund balance policy, which is about 60 days operational expenses. And I know there's more pieces to that equation as well. The assigned fund balance for capital projects is 20 million, because this is what council had prior, previously approved, setting aside 20 million for capital. And I do want to note on the forecast, the salaries moving out for the six-year is about a 3% that we include in that forecast, benefits 5%. I will say for benefits, it's coming in much larger for 2024. So we'll have to look at that with the finance team to see if we wait one year and see if it comes out, but I've heard it might be double digits coming forward for 2024 for medical. And then services and supplies are both a 2% forecasted out. And again, the revenues that we're seeing coming in from sales taxes coming really in line with what was previously approved and adopted in the 2023 budget. Any questions on the six-year forecast?
Just a comment, I'm looking at the kind of yellow tan line on projecting, projected ending fund balance, and wow, the current year projected forecast is quite different from what follows in 2024 and after that, different by 20 million bucks. So that's, that's a lot of difference. Just a comment, but it's rather sudden drop too, and then some stability after that.
Yes, Emily just mentioned that it's the one-time approvals that carry over into 2024. Go ahead and, no, you're good.
Speaker's working. It's, so when you look at 2023, that includes all of the one-time appropriations that the council's approved. When we move over to 2024, those are pulled out, so that's why 2024 and future years are showing a reduced number.
Any other questions on the six-year forecast? I want to make sure, Council Marshal, are you good?
I've been thinking. I guess just generally, and this is the first year I've really looked at this at this stage, if this, if there's surprises, how does this compare to previous years or, or because we're in so much flux, it's difficult to compare, but just kind of an overall picture of your assessment of where we stand right now?
So just for the general fund, kind of in, as a focus, I think we did see a lot of flux through the last couple of years with COVID, and we did see a lot of realignment last year with the revenue increases for the general fund, especially for sales tax. So I think over the past couple of years, it's been pretty chaotic, and we've been able to right-size it. Now I feel like we are coming in close to what we budgeted and projected. We did a lot of work with the auditor's office to look at the revenues and right-size those, so we're seeing those come in, and we're projecting those, those revenues at historical growth rates. So like for sales tax, we're back at 4.2% as our standard year over year. I think with the expenses, we are seeing increases, but there's a lot of savings that are offsetting those. So when you think about inflation and some of those other factors in the economy, it's hard to see those line by line and how that's increasing, but if, if folks were to spend their entire expense budget appropriation, I think we'd possibly see more increases there. But we are seeing a lot of savings across the board with vacancies and with their controllable budgets. I do think that, and I've talked with Kathleen about this, I think the conversation with the 2024 budget is going to be a lot more challenging because of all the requests and all the needs that have been put forward and the affordability of them for ongoing sustainability, it's going to be difficult. But we'll bring all that forward with a lot more information, hopefully some conversations prior to the actual work session and hearing as the council would want.
Madam Chair, I had a comment based on that question and answer.
Go ahead.
So first and foremost, I would give plaudits over the years that I've been sitting here. The team, the finance team and the manager have done an absolutely extraordinary job managing the budget and within the available resources, and, and that continues. I mean, it's just mind-boggling, the number of packages and, and the tough decisions that have to be recommended to us to reject some of the packages that some of the departments have asked for, and in the past, some departments every year just simply ask for the moon without really sharpening their pencil and being realistic on their requests. So a lot of hard budgeting work goes on every year, and we have been balancing our budgets every year, at least since I've been here. But as to the question that Counselor just asked, I'm surprised at the comment that this is really the first time she's really looked at it in this process because she was the one that voted for a property tax increase.
Oh, just if you don't mind at this stage.
So if I could finish my comment, Counselor, without interruption, thank you. So last year, I'd like, what's really different over the last few years, as turbulent as it's been, is that our fund balances have been very healthy. The sales tax revenue changed course in part because of the pandemic and went up that first year by 40%. So our revenue was very strong across the board, our REIT was being put back in place, every fund balance was very healthy. And projecting out to six years, we were going to maintain balanced budgets as on staying on course, and we had a balanced budget, yet there were three votes last year to nevertheless kind of reflexively just increase property tax by 1%. So I'm going to ask that we don't, we, we look at the budget and see what we really need before we make any decision like that, because this is, you know, years ago, what we used to see was an annual declining fund balance, where it basically went down to zero in the projected six-year forecast. So this is dramatically improved since I've been sitting here. It's heartening, and I know that's the hard work of, of the county manager and the finance team, as well as some changes that perhaps the pandemic brought about. So anyway, nothing should be reflexive. We really should make our decisions, our tough decisions coming up with what the actual fund balances look like, what they're projected to be, and whether we can balance a budget moving forward without making cuts or increasing taxes. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor, again.
I was curious, you know, inflation is a huge impact on us, and I am curious, I mean, inflation has decreased, but how much is the lag time on that? I mean, are we, you know, is, are we going to really see the, the improvement in the inflation rate next year, or are we already, you know what I'm saying, is it, how, how long does it take for that to process through in the budget process?
I'm going to invite Mike or Mark Gasway up. I know that we do, it is accounted for in the projections of the 3% of, or 2% of services and supplies. Mark, maybe you have some insight on that?
To answer that question, Counselor, we're, we're seeing it now. I mean, if you look at, we've had to come back constantly, if you look at our capital projects, every time we go out for a capital project, they're coming back higher than we expected. If we look at, you know, information we received two years ago, it's not, it's not good anymore. As Emily presented, or Kathleen presented, several of the requests in the fall supplemental are for inflationary purposes. So we're seeing it now. I don't expect it to continue to grow like it did over the last year, year and a half. It should moderate, but we are budgeting for those things. We're trying to include those as we go forward. When we look at projections as, as this forecast, we use historical trends because, you know, we can't rely on a single year's data to project out into the future. So I, everyone tries to incorporate that, you know, a good example of that is what we've done with, with the Baker Tilly study. It's incorporated into this forecast, but that was, you know, an actual component of demand or inflation in the labor market, so.
Thank you, that, that answered it pretty well. Actually, I was just kind of curious, do you anticipate us not to be seeing these giant increases anymore in what we anticipate for our capital projects? I mean, are we trying?
If I knew that, I wouldn't be working here.
It's, it's tough. I appreciate all the work that you guys do, and, I mean, there's so much that goes into it, I'm, I'm glad I'm not in your seat, so thank you for the work you do.
Kathleen, this is Sarah.
It's a 50/50 split on Wall Street as to what's happening, and those are people that just focus on national trends.
Yeah, this is Sarah, Clark County Treasurer's Office. I was just going to add a little bit to the inflation conversation as well, because we do monitor that very closely in the treasurer's office. And with respect to other funds, inflation absolutely is having an impact. If you look at revenues related to REIT, which are from our real estate excise taxes, we've seen some significant slowdowns in the real estate market and the transactional activity that's happening there, just because interest rates are so high. So we're seeing declines in those revenue sources. So there is obviously the expense issue, which exists in the general fund, and Mark spoke to that, but inflation has another side of the coin, which is it also contributes to some impacts on some of our other revenue streams. So I just wanted to point that out, and those revenue streams also fund or contribute to funding capital projects. So lower revenues there and higher costs with respect to capital.
This is why we have a great finance team. We meet regularly and they monitor this, and we have these discussions regularly. Any other questions on the six-year forecast? So the next one is just showing where the budget reports are. These are on the, actually, they're on the presentation underneath the link to the presentation on our site here, as well as on the budget website. I will note, there's a lot of reports out there, a lot of detailed data. One of the reports does show each package, a summary of what the name is, what it is, and then the, the financial impact, that's the total financial impact, it's not impact by fund. There's other reports that show impact by fund. We are going to look at trying to set up that sort, so it's not sorted by department, but sorted by how it's being presented, by previously approved, new, so that, I think, Council Marshal, that will help also, so it's in the order in which I'll present it at the hearing as well. So we'll work on, on getting that type of report to the council. And then next steps, again, if there's any other questions or feedback for us today, we're more than happy to answer questions or do more research. We do have the public hearing on October 17th, which is the night, the nighttime hearing. And if you have also, Counsel, any thoughts, changes, concerns, even after today, please let me know, because we can. let me know, because we can pull together the necessary team to make sure that we're addressing those before the hearing comes up.
Just one suggestion, like, I, I, I agree with Sue Marshall's comment on that one chart, it would be helpful in the future if we could add the, the dollar amount.
It's, it's out there now, just sorted differently right now, it's, so it is on the reports right now, but we'll make sure it's sorted in the way that we're presenting. And then I would just like to thank again Emily and her team, the finance team and all the departments and offices, because this, I mean, it's, it's, I love this process just because I get to learn about what everybody does and the services we provide, but it's also hard and heartbreaking if we can't support what they need because of financial constraints, but I do appreciate everybody's work on this process. So Chair, I think that's it for the work session.
That concludes your, your comments in that event, and it's been most informative, and October 17th at the public hearing will be an important one. So we move now to council time. Excuse me, I have something in my throat.